To make his announcement about Spanish interpretation.
Muy buenas tardes, mi nombre es Diego Celis, seré intérprete español inglés, inglés español para la reunión de hoy. Si usted está planeando hacer un comentario y necesita servicio de intérprete, por favor, hablar clara y lentamente para que yo lo escuche. Favor de hacer una pausa al final de sus oraciones para asegurarse de que tengo la oportunidad de interpretarle. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Diego. Everyone, we're going to take things a little out of order here because we have a Prop 218 process that requires us to bring this item up, then you have to tabulate and certify any protest votes on this. So we're going to take this item up first and then we'll go back to item number 14, which is our first scheduled item of the afternoon agenda. So item 16 is an issue regarding the county service area 25, the Carmel Valley Golf and Country Club, also known as Quail Lodge. This is to conduct a public hearing to hear objections to or protest against the proposed annual assessment for CSA 25 property owners pursuant to Proposition 218 requirements. This is also to direct the clerk of the board to tabulate and certify protests received before the conclusion of the public hearing and to determine if your property majority protests exist or if no majority protests exist. If it does, if a majority protest does exist, no annual assessment may be imposed. But if there are no majority protests, we could adopt a resolution approving the annual assessment. So to present on this, we have Lynette Redman coming back again after lunch, or someone else. Sorry about that. I'm just following my notes here.
Yeah, yeah, I got it. Good afternoon Chair Alejo, fellow supervisors, colleagues, and members of the public. My name is Eric Roberts, Senior Civil Engineer in the County's Public Works Facilities and Parks Department. I'm here with Lynette Redman and and a specialist in our special districts division and our consultant Adam Marston with Harrison Associates to convene this hearing pursuant to Proposition 218 requirements to hear objections to or protest against the proposed annual assessment of property owners within county service area or CSA 25. When the hearing is concluded, staff will count and tabulate the ballots as Chair Lehou indicated. The activity will take place in an adjacent room downstairs and it's open to the public. Once the ballots have been tabulated, staff will return to announce the results and if no majority protest exists, direct the clerk of the board to adopt a resolution approving the annual assessments proposed for CSA 25. We'll now open the public hearing, but I want to add that at this time, we can also accept ballots from CSA 25 property owners during the hearing who have yet to vote on this proposed assessment.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll open it up for the board if you have any questions on this process. I don't see any. Now we'll open up the public hearing for any comments on this item, any protest votes. This is a time to do that? Yes, I'd love to hear you.
My name is Bruce Sozaki. I'm a 20-year resident at Quail Community. I'm not part of the HOA, but I think the last time was in front of this committee. I was trying to save the lakes there, which we did, which was a nice thing. I just want to talk about the CSA on principle. I'd like to bring forward the significant governance concerns that I have with the CSA. I think there needs to be proper fiscal management to be in place, oversight and transparency that would be available to any and all CSA taxpaying residents. This is particularly concerning if each street, as you might have noticed, is paying a different amount. So the counting must be made by street and not put into one bucket and assume that a spend on the estimated work done by the engineer. Engineering report. It is confirmed by both the consultant and the county that the one bucket approach will be taken, so all the money will be put in one bucket. And despite each street in the CSA paying a different amount. Additionally, my concern is with the historical management of our tax monies here and even more so with the approach. If we keep stirring the fiscal management of the money pot the same way and expect different results, we're not going to get that. So we just need to be clear that this scope and the risk is much larger. To be clear, on the one bucket management approach, it means that if it's deemed that one street or an area of the community requires the funds, all the funds will go there to take care of that. And if the next year, another part of the street or the area, all the funds will go there. So there's no guarantee that the contribution of each street in accordance to which each person paid or each street paid would go to them. So I understand, I did a little more homework, I'm getting good at this government thing a bit, that the Municipal Improvement Act of 1913 allows the assessment of each property. So I get that, that's clear. But it's not so clear. It does not say that each property or road would be charged differently and then not treated as individual assessments. So different contributions are made in the assessment, but not accounted for individually, which seems a bit goofy, but and hence why I'm here. So I see both management and legal concerns with this approach in general. Also additionally, I guess to complicate matters, the voting of the CSA is apparently weighted to what each street pays. So if I pay a bit more on my street, my vote counts more than somebody else's who pays less on their street. So it's not an equal vote. So that seemed a bit goofy, but you know, I'm not necessarily the brightest bulb on the government wisdom tree. But the new CSA math kind of really confuses me, even though I'm a Berkeley grad.
Go Bears!
Yeah, that's right. We need a football team one year.
Exactly.
So I asked the supervisors if this is fair and equitable and to take that into consideration.
Thank you, sir, for your comments here today. Anyone else? We appreciate Mr. Sozaki's comments. Love to hear from anyone else. We don't see anybody else in chambers, anybody else online. One last call for comments on item number 16. If not, I'll just get clarification, we'll close public comments and I'll just get clarification from county council. We now just put this on hold so the staff could go then conduct it. We got to prove a motion first.
No, you put it on hold while staff goes and tabulates any protests and they'll come back when they're ready and we'll resume the hearing on the matter.
Okay, very well. We'll do, we'll do that. And thank you very much for the presentation and we'll put this on hold, let that work happen. And for clarification, where is the count being done downstairs, just so the public could be clear where that is taking place and it is open, transparent to the public.
Yes, it'll be held in the closed session room. So if they check in with the clerk's office, they'll be escorted back there.
So that is downstairs. As you pass the bathrooms, there's the clerk's window and they will be escorted into that room if they want to observe that.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions for the public on where to go if you want to observe the count? Don't see any? Okay, so then we will put that item on hold and we'll bring, we'll pick it up a little bit later during the meeting. We'll now go to, we'll go to item 14. This is to receive a presentation from the County of Monterey Department of Emergency Management regarding the development of a Paharo long-term recovery plan for the unincorporated township of Paharo severely impacted by the 2023 Pineapple Express winter storm and subsequent flooding in March. And to present, we have Kelly Scanlon, the Director of Emergency Management, and Danielle Gonzalez, Emergency Services Planner.
Thank you.
Kelsey Scanlon.
That's okay. I'll respond to both. Thank you so much.
I missed read it then, yeah.
You know what, you're reading too fast.
Just keeping an eye on me over here, or near on.
I listed it as in Chelsea. So my name is Kelsey Scanlon. I'm the Director of Emergency Management here at the County of Monterey. With me, I have Emergency Services Planner Danielle Gonzalez and Vicente Lara from the Health Department. While he pulls up the presentation, I want to say thank you for having us here today. In the aftermath of the flooding in Paharo, we really heard the community. And so my hope is that our presentation today is reflective of those of those concerns that the community has and the county's recommendation for how best to continue to receive feedback, but also how to make the voices of Paharo heard and make that vision come to life over the next five to 10 years through a long-term recovery task force. And so with that, are you able to share your screen? Would you mind making Vicente a panelist, please? Thank you. All right, next slide, please. So in summation, the levee initially breached on March 10th with the EOC activating approximately 24 hours before. And throughout the entire response, the EOC was activated, and we really have been dealing with the significant damage and loss, not just to critical infrastructure, but to our residential and business community. And so with that, we also have been observing significant impact to health and social services, which are a bit less tangible to the economy, which is more financial, but also at the heart of the community of Paharo, specifically with regards to agriculture. We've obviously seen impacts to water, wastewater, roads, the levee, clean drinking water. We've also seen impacts to other county facilities that are maybe not so critical, but still very important to the community, which we refer to as natural and cultural resources. I think for a lot of people, there's a clear delineation between response and recovery, but in reality, these two phases very much overlap. But more importantly, response, recovery, preparedness, and mitigation overlap at the same time in the nexus of recovery. And so we're at that process now where we're moving from response into recovery. And so the last couple of months, you've seen the more immediate recovery efforts, such as non-congregate sheltering, the comfort and hygiene hubs, the long-term, or sorry, the local assistance center. Those are all very much reflective of short-term recovery efforts. And now what we're starting to look at is mid- and long-term recovery, and what the county can do and what the community can do to look at resilience from a whole community perspective. As I said, the EOC is still activated. We have been since March 9th. So that's, with the exception of COVID, the longest EOC activation I've ever seen. And so it's fairly unprecedented for us to still be serving in a response capacity as we are today. But we are very honored to do so, but also looking towards that recovery component. And with that, I will let Daniel talk about some of our successes in short-term recovery.
So to follow to follow on what Kelsey's mentioning, I think it's really important to highlight the amount of work that has been going on since the storms began, from the outreach to the community in the different languages that are spoken, from Spanish, translating all the materials, all the alerts, to Spanish, Mixteco, and Tiki, to doing canvassing with the community, with the residents going out and speaking to them one-on-one. You know, from the implementation of the Equity Officer at the EOC since the January storms began. I think it's been, you know, it's been quite an effort from all the team and everybody that was involved in the response and now in the recovery phase. So I would definitely like to highlight the fact that we've been trying to provide services to the community and to give them access to resources and in a way where it's closer to them, they have ease of access, and they can go to one place and seek those services. So for that purpose, we've opened different type of assistance centers, from the LAC, the Local Assistance Centers, that we've opened, you know, since January, and then in March at the Watsonville Veterans Hall, then the opening of the DRC at, first at the Watsonville City Hall, the old city hall, and then at the Mobile DRC at the Paharo Park, where it remained open for several months. Then also to looking for other ways in which to reach the community through the CBOs and the opening of the CRC, the Community Resource Center, which served, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in the next slide, about how many residents were served and how many households were served in these areas. And so also to the emergency congregate shelter that was open and the non-congregate shelter that to this day continues to serve the residents. And so as I mentioned, you know, all of these efforts, throughout these efforts, the county efforts and county work that has gone on has served over 1,856 individuals. The LAC alone in Watsonville Veterans Hall served 1,141. The Community Resource Center served 455 households. And so far, at the non-congregate shelter, we've served 80 families or slash 260 individuals throughout the duration of the non-congregate shelter. So, you know, FEMA in total, in their DRC throughout their activation, they have served 2,581 residents with 957 approvals for a total of almost $5 million, or over $5 million in assistance for residents. So I think it's really highlighting all the work that has happened, but also, you know, we know that the community has been, you know, voicing out concerns about how we engage and how we've been connecting. So for that reason, we held a couple of town hall meetings where residents had the opportunity to voice some of those concerns. And so part of that, the idea of having these hearings was to really get to understand how we can improve the work and how we can move forward with the recovery efforts. And I think, you know, it's clear that we needed to look for a new way or a new form of engagement with residents. So with that, I will pass the presentation to Vicente Lara, who is our manager for recovery.
All right, good afternoon. Thank you. So at this stage, in terms of the recovery, the Department of Emergency Management has been given the directive to develop a long-term recovery plan for the community of Paharo. And in terms of really taking the experience and the lessons learned from the last few months in regards to responding to the disaster, there's really two guiding principles that this team is really embodying in terms of moving forward with our long-term recovery planning. The first aspect is this idea of this plan really being community-led. And I'll talk a little bit more in detail in terms of what that means. But that's a really important element in terms of the work that we want to do moving forward over the next few months, as well as creating a collaborative environment where the diversity of voices within the community are able to sit at the table and really help us develop and implement a comprehensive recovery plan. And we see this work happening through a number of activities and efforts. And in this slide, we see a couple of those examples. But I think a couple that I do want to highlight is really the idea of individual and family empowerment. We had a meeting last night with Supervisor Church in Paharo, where we were able to connect with some of the residents in Paharo and really start hearing some of their concerns and their priorities. And I think the second piece that I really want to point out is the idea of engagement, engaged partnership and inclusiveness. We really think that this is going to be important. We know there's a number of stakeholders and groups in the community with a lot of energy to support, and we're really looking forward to connecting with those stakeholders and with those groups to develop this plan, so. In terms of, and actually, I think the other piece that I do want to mention is as we've started this work, we have, I think it's just important to acknowledge the fact that there were some planning efforts after the 95 disaster. Some of our stakeholders have reminded us about that. And I think we just want to make sure we kind of give a nod to those previous planning efforts. And also think about what are some of the lessons learned that we can take from those previous planning efforts and, you know, really incorporate those, especially in terms of making sure that some of the recommendations and some of the strategies that come out of our current planning efforts are implemented and ensuring that future disasters are mitigated as much as possible. And part of that is through this idea of this plan and this planning effort really being community-led. And one of the tools that we're really using to guide our work is the Spectrum of Community Engagement to Ownership. This tool authored by Rosa Gonzalez, who's actually a local resident of Monterey County, lives here in Salinas. This is a really great tool that I've been using quite a bit within my work at the Health Department and really hoping to bring this to the work with our Department of Emergency Management. I think the the importance of this tool is that it provides staff with some pretty concrete examples of how to move along the spectrum of community engagement and really acknowledging the fact that a lot of the work around community engagement is relationship building and thinking about how we connect and build authentic relationships with the folks that we're trying to work with. And, you know, with this slide, we can kind of see the different levels of engagement, starting with inform, going all the way into empower. And I would recommend that staff take a look at this tool, just in general, because I think it provides a lot of concrete examples of, you know, what does inform mean, what does consult mean, what does involve mean, et cetera, et cetera. Like I said, it's a very valuable tool that I find useful, and we're really looking forward to incorporating it into the work that we're doing. I think a couple of outcomes that we really want to see through our community engagement work is making sure that those underrepresented voices have a seat at the table. I think that's going to be very key to really developing a comprehensive plan, as well as looking at diversity as strength and really enhancing the quality of the decision-making that we're hoping to achieve over the next few months with all the different stakeholders that are involved. And ultimately, we really see the relationship building and the trust building that we are hoping to build with our stakeholders to ensure a successful implementation of the plan, and we think that this tool will really help us in that work. So just a quick overview in terms of our timeline and our hope for this plan in terms of our scope of work. Two really important pieces here. One, we really want to make sure that we develop a plan that has short, mid, and long-term goals. We know the long-term goals are really important. We also see the value in being able to identify short-term goals and midterm goals so that we're able to show our residents that we are moving forward with concrete recovery efforts in the immediate. I think the unique piece to all this is that, fingers crossed, we will have some resources that we will be able to utilize and leverage fairly quickly in terms of getting some of this work done in the short term, as well as building a constructive relationship with residents in Paharo. Again, I think that's going to be key in terms of making sure that we're able to implement this plan in a successful manner. We need community buy-in. We need community support and getting them involved as early as possible. I think it's going to really increase our chances of making that happen. And at the end of the day, we want to see Paharo restored to pre-disaster or even enhanced status because we know that a community that improves its systems, improves its infrastructure, improves its economic activities, improves its housing in the long run, will be more resilient to future disasters. And so we really see that as an important aspect to that. We have our timeline here. Just quickly, right now, we are performing a community assessment. We are going now, we have a short survey that we have staff that will be out in Paharo getting feedback, again, really helping us figure out where we should be prioritizing our efforts. And we are looking at building our internal capacity by developing a strong team that is committed to the principles that I just outlined. We are in the early stages of really connecting with those key stakeholders and those local resident leaders to help us form our planning committee. And looking forward to really developing a strong community engagement plan as we move forward over the next, you know, nine months in terms of this planning effort. We hope to have a draft of the plan to you, to the Board of Supervisors, in May of next year. And so that you all can take a look at it. We also want to make sure that there's a 30-day review period so that we can collect additional feedback from the general public and really have a finalized plan to the Board of Supervisors by June of next year. I know this is ambitious, but we really see the value in making sure that we are able to solidify a recovery plan as soon as possible so that we can begin to rebuild in a successful way.
All right, so the County Administrator De La Rosa and Director Elsa Jimenez from the Health Department and I fully felt that it was extremely important for the county to demonstrate our commitment to this cause. And so Director Jimenez has very graciously lent us Vicente from the Health Department. And so both Vicente and Daniel have been working in Paharo, boots on the ground since day one. And in the process of looking for a disaster recovery manager, we felt that not only were they the best advocates for the county, but they were the most appropriate advocates for the community. And so with that, we have appointed Vicente Lara as the Disaster Recovery Manager and Daniel Gonzalez as the Community Liaison. And with the intent and purpose that they will be the direct link between the county and the community for receiving community feedback and also communicating recovery efforts on behalf of the county. One of the complaints that we received the most of was there were so many agencies, so many people actively engaged in the community, they didn't really know who to go to other than their elected officials, and we heard that. And so by having the dedicated county staff, we're hoping to have strength in our unity, but also in our intent so that people understand that we're serious about what we're planning to do. Is this me? Okay, sorry. So with that, the Recovery Task Force is broken up into smaller subcommittees. It's very easy for everyone to want to talk about all the things, all the time, everywhere, all at once. And so by breaking the task force down into six subcommittees, we're hoping that we can have very meaningful conversations about each of these categories. So the first is agricultural and economic recovery, talking about the economy of the community. Ag, which is obviously a big part of not just the culture of the community, but also the income and the livelihood of many of our community members. Health and social services, so their ability to access government services and either maintain their current health or improve their health, whether it be physical, mental, emotional, et cetera. Housing and community development, so looking at our housing limitations, where we can develop, where we can't develop. Creative solutions for not just, you know, local businesses, but also for our housing options. And then looking at infrastructure and how not only can we improve it, but also make it useful for the community, right? So an asset that nobody really uses is kind of a waste of everyone's time and effort. And so we're really looking to get feedback from the community also on natural and cultural resources. How can we continue to make Paharo more of a home? How can we have the community of Paharo look how the community envisions it? And also public safety, obviously with this whole effort being a result of flooding, it's extremely important for us to look at how we respond to future disasters. Just by proxy of being in a floodplain, there is always going Just by proxy of being in a flood plain, there is always going to be a hazard one way or another, whether it be also due to an earthquake or to wildfire. So we're really looking at how can we continue to create a more disaster resilient community through each of these subcommittees? And so each subcommittee will have county leadership or a department representative who's, you know, along the same lines of the the task force that they're assigned to. The recovery manager, special districts, state agencies, federal agencies, community and community-based and nonprofit organizations where appropriate. And the 10 to 15 community members at large that we've started identifying will be broken up into two or three people per per group. And we'll talk a little bit in a moment about how else we're going to engage the community beyond the task forces. But essentially, this is the current makeup. And so this is somewhat of an org chart. I do really want to be clear that we are not doing this in a silo. We are very much working with the Long-Term Recovery Group. It's extremely important that our efforts are mutually reinforcing and we create a nexus where the community-based organizations and our subcommittees and generally the Recovery Task Force are working together to advocate on behalf of the community, but also to create a document essentially that reflects those efforts. Oh, sorry, that's still me. So we have a very unique and rare opportunity with Assembly Bill 102, which is directly related to the $20 million that have been earmarked for Pajaro recovery efforts. This does not happen often, and in my career, I have never seen this, and we're very excited. We also recognize that there's never going to be enough money, and the demands are high, the needs are great. And so it is incumbent upon the Board of Supervisors to make informed decisions on how to best strategically leverage this money. And so my recommendation for the board is that for any agency that would like to access the 20 million, if they could work through the Pajaro Recovery Task Force to prioritize the needs with the limited amount of money and at such time that the plan comes to the board for adoption, you also receive a recommendation on how best to spend or allocate the 20 million. So instead of having organizations approach you independently, and it is more of a first come, first serve kind of basis. This is more of an organized, very strategic and very mindful attempt to make sure that not a single penny is wasted. Oh, no.
Oh, no.
Let's go back. There we go.
Okay. No, I'm good. Thank you. So we just wanted to wrap up with some concrete next steps. I do want to highlight a couple of things that have happened so far. Daniel Gonzalez did attend the last Pajaro Valley, or what is it? The Pajaro Long-Term Recovery Alliance. Last week, gave a presentation similar to the one we're giving today, really just discussing the overall framework that we're using. And had a good conversation about how how to involve the folks that are organizing that group in terms of participating in this as well. Last night, we had a meeting with some local residents in Pajaro, very diverse homeowners, local business owners, just residents from the community. We had a really good conversation about, again, overview of the plan, but more importantly, you know, getting some feedback from them in terms of what should be those priorities that that we focus on moving forward as we as we kick off this this planning effort. Our hope is to have our first formal Recovery Plan Steering Committee meeting kickoff meeting at the end of August. Right now, we have it tentative for August 29th. We're hoping to be able to identify the county, our county colleagues that are going to support us in this, our local nonprofits and our local resident leaders who will form the steering committee as we as we move forward. And we will be back in September with it with an update in terms of our our progress. And our goal is to be able to provide monthly updates to the Board of Supervisors. So so the Board of Supervisors is aware of our efforts as we move forward.
All right, that is back to us. All right. Well, first of all, thank you. Thank you to all three of you and the rest of the team for doing this work and bringing this proposal forward. I think it's the right approach to take, creating this task force and really finding a way to engage a lot of partners, but more importantly, engaging the community. So for you to do that work and propose bringing in community voices, I think that's imperative in this process. And I think the community wants to see this, that that there is a serious plan and a very thoughtful process about how to deal with the recovery. But it's also, we're in recovery, but here we are going into soon into the fall and into the next winter. And I think those voices, just these partnerships will be key just moving forward and looking out for the protection of this community. I have other comments to make first, but I'm going to go first to Supervisor Church, since this is a district. Any questions or comments?
I don't have any questions. I have comments maybe after a public comment. I'll do mine.
Any any other questions for here for the the panelists? Supervisor Adams?
Thank you. I I will end with a with a question. But I must say that to me, this proposal really represents a once in a lifetime opportunity, not just for the residents of Pajaro, but for all of the the residents of Monterey County. For us to be able to stop and plan for the future of a community is just a significant, a significant step to be able to fully engage people, to hear their voices and to know that we're going to be able to act upon their their thoughts and their plans and their what they want to see is truly it's game, it's a game changing step. And it's really what we need if we want people to be able to thrive as a community and as a county. My experience that from United Way just really underscores the importance of this kind of work. And we saw it all over the country with communities that had an opportunity to to look at at this sort of situation, to turn a horrible situation into something that's absolutely uplifting and magnificent. And so the I just could not be more supportive of this kind of community engagement approach, and I'm really thrilled. But the question that I have for you is, is the funding needed for the the planning element of this included in the 20 million? And do you expect that we would need to use all of it for this plan coming forward? My recommendation to you would be put half of it in the bank and see how, you know, how it goes. But truthfully, I'm in all seriousness.
Yes.
What's your anticipation of the cost of the kinds of planning that you're looking at here?
So because we're doing it in-house, it's really just the the cost of Jose Lara. And so we are through an MOU with the Health Department, assuming the responsibility for his salary and the special assignment pay in the EOC budget. And it's a little short of $200,000, which we currently can absorb. I will say that it does remove money from the EOC budget, which might be needed in future storms or fires. But that is currently our intent, so as not to have to continue to draw on strategic reserve. The other cost is approximately $60,000 for a mobile portable trailer office. Because so much of Pajaro was destroyed, we don't have any space to work. And so we're looking at acquiring a trailer that we can put somewhere in Pajaro as a disaster recovery office with office hours where people can come to us for questions, comments, concerns. So that will also be coming out of the EOC budget.
So are you saying then that the $20 million that has been dedicated to this will be used for like?
It'll go directly to projects that are identified in the plan. So throughout the planning effort, my intention is that each of the subcommittees put forth a list of initiatives for short, mid, and long-term recovery and identify a cost estimate and a recommendation for you all on how to prioritize that. There are also other funding mechanisms available, not just the 20 million that the county is actively pursuing. And we hope to also include that in the plan as well. A perfect example is our office now has the ability to spend $50,000 to equip and train a community emergency response team in Pajaro, which we fully intend to do if that's what the community would like. And so it's really a combination, a compilation of all the projects and potential funding sources, including the 20 million, but not limited to the 20 million.
Thank you.
Other questions first, before we go to public comments? Yes, Supervisor ask you.
Yeah, I guess it's a question. To my colleague Supervisor Church, in terms of the way in which your office is a part of this and how are you working? How, what is the, what is that integration of overlapping?
Yeah, the integration's great. I mean, and as Vicente said, we, there was a meeting yesterday at Pajaro Park. I was there with one of my staff members, Vanessa, and we're actually working with them on and the and the community-based group that is also working on on long-term recovery. Vanessa's kind of involved in both of those groups. So I just had a discussion with with them yesterday too about, you know, meeting monthly, getting updates. I'm going to be, you know, directly involved in in this. I mean, they're obviously doing the the real, the real hard work. I just get to sit back and kind of kind of see what they're doing. But it's been a lot of involvement all through the months through here. This is a fantastic team. I'm just, you know, can't speak more highly of them. So there's there's plenty of integration into that.
Okay, no, that's great. And I know that the community has come together in many ways to be responsive to all of the just emerging needs as they've happened. Sometimes community moves a lot faster than government can. And so we also, another question, we had some comment, public comments at our meeting, I believe it was last week, from groups and community that were, you know, creating coalitions. Are those folks all engaged and is there a role for them to play? Is that part of this broader coalition that's together?
Yes. So in the PowerPoint, you'll see on the org chart, there's the Long-Term Recovery Group that's parallel to Vicente's position. And so they they have formed an organization. We're very supportive of that. There is absolutely a role for community-based organizations. In addition to all of the work that'll be occurring in the task force, where appropriate, we're matching community-based organizations with the subcommittees. So they have their own role and their own agenda that we are very supportive of. And Vicente and Daniel actively engage with them as well. And they have been invited to participate in some of the subgroups as well. So we're trying to have a nexus of both of those efforts. And so there's space for everyone.
Okay, great. And then just, you know, final comment, your $20 million, it sounds like a lot of money. But to to go into a community that that probably could have used $20 million on some really important projects before a disaster. And then to say, you know, we've had a major, you know, major crisis, everyone's been impacted. The harm and the trauma and the challenges that the community are facing moving forward. I I hope that we can continue to find ways to leverage additional funding. I know, you know, there have been lots of fundraisers and there's lots of other, and I think sometimes it's really helpful when you say, here's the plan and here's all the needs. Even that in itself can help generate additional revenue and investment in a community to revitalize it. So I just, this, I appreciate the planning. I appreciate the thoughtfulness. I appreciate the way that you're, you know, keeping the District Two team involved and engaged. I appreciate the the model that you're using. I think we've used this in other places and found it to be really helpful that we're not just there telling people what we're doing, but, you know, actually working to empower and increase capacity of residents, which which I just again acknowledge, like, that's really challenging too when you're, you know, we talk about empowering people, but when you're already working full-time, when you're already taking care of family, when you're already trying to pay your bills, you know, and you want me now to come to more meetings and be more engaged and be empowered to do more work, like, there are, there are challenges there too. But I hear the acknowledgement of that and I look forward to, you know, continuing to find the ways that this board can be supportive. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions first? And we go to comments. I got some questions, but you want to say some? Supervisor Amina, CEO de La Rosa.
Just a couple of comments in terms of how this funding and what we're, how the team is working on this. It really is focusing on the longer term impact. We've done a lot of short-term, immediate solutions, and we know that more is needed. But this is really the longer term picture that we're looking at. And Raul Mendez, who's the CEO of Merced County, has also reached out to me wanting to meet with our team. Because they have a similar situation in Planada, and they too are receiving the $20 million. And so their community is very similar to ours, where there's, again, a lot of resources that are needed. But this 20 million, they want to make it so that it's a longer term impact.
One of the things that I think, Kelsey, maybe you can clarify, there is reimbursement for some of the recovery services. And I know it's either through FEMA or CALOES. Can you provide some insight on that?
Yeah, so some of Vicente's time and Daniel's time can be recovered through FEMA public assistance, so long it's directly related to projects that are identified in our worksheets essentially. So if it's directly related to the levy, which the Infrastructure Subcommittee is looking at addressing, if it's related to any type of road repair or non-congregate sheltering and housing need. So there is opportunity for us to recover some of the money, but I anticipate it will not be more than 50 to 75%.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And in terms of my questions, my my first one was was similar to what our CEO just said in that we, there should be some communication, because the only two communities got the 20 million each and Planada. And I know the Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability is one of the nonprofits who was advocating in Sacramento, get the language put into AB 102. But there should be some, hopefully some exchange of ideas of how to best implement that. But the other thing, the other aspect that I really like about this proposal is that it creates a clear process, because as soon as the community heard in the news that the legislature approved 20 million, they said, well, that's what that's going to be used for. And obviously, from the language in the budget bill, it said the money couldn't be used to duplicate already existing resources, right? So with that caveat that's in there, this would still allow the community to be engaged, provide input and formulate a plan about how best they feel it should be used. But some of my concerns I had there were that, hopefully, in the process, that there's some investments that are tangible, that people could see that improvements did happen in their community that are not just short-term. Because some services, they last for a few months, and then when the money dries up, they're gone. And then what will happen at the end of this process, the community is going to look back and said, where did all that money go? We didn't see any improvements happen in the community. If there was a plan in 1995, I don't, you know, I lived through that, and I didn't see many physical infrastructure, community beautification, revitalizations, public art, where people could see, if you cross the the bridge, Pajaro Bridge, Watson has made a lot of those investments, public art and landscaping. It's very immediate, it's very obvious. When you cross on the opposite side, there's a burnt down building that's been in a really poor state of condition, blighted for years now, it burned down. And that's the first thing people see when they go into Pajaro. I know I followed up with county staff about making sure that building, and I heard permits are in, they're trying to do something there, which would be great, mixed-use commercial and housing on top. But I just want some of these investments, these one-term investments to hopefully be those kind of investments that the community will see are long-lasting. Obviously, we heard from Pajaro Park needing some improvements. That's a very highly utilized part of the community. So the so the other question I had was on the office space, because it was like $60,000. I know community bridges opened, an office that they're having over the next year. So I don't know if they're have, they're half-staffed there every day of the week. I doubt it. But but maybe that's a way to kind of have some cost savings by utilizing their space when they're not there present. And the other, the other two things I thought were important in that, in in terms of not working in silos. One was, how does a community, community leaders in Pajaro stay apprised of the the Pajaro Regional Flood Management Agency process, right? It's a long-term process, but that that goes to the core of what the community is concerned about. When is the work going to get done? Many didn't know the process, even though there'd been a lot of meetings around that. People don't really tune into a meeting unless it's immediate in their everyday lives. But I I think that this effort should have some connection with with the new Regional Flood Management Agency so that the community is constantly being apprised of the process of the long-term work that's going to happen on the levy. And apparently, Dr. Strudley said, at least the first phase, even though it's on the Santa Cruz County side, the Army Corpsman Junior is expediting permitting to be able to start hopefully next summer. permitting to be able to start hopefully next summer. And that's some time savings. But I thought, just the community education part about the actual flood protection improvements, and Pajaro will need to be, I think, part of a process there. So the community is in tune with what is happening there. The other part is also connecting with Tamsi on its, on its work to do the bike lane improvements, the road improvements. Those will all be visible. I think it's a $2 million grant they receive, or 1.5 million, but those would be all serious, um, public infrastructure improvements on, in terms of road, pedestrian, and bike safety. And just another way to engage, connect that work with all these folks that you're bringing together. So those would be my only two suggestions, because I thought, those kinds of infrastructure improvements, and then the levy improvements, I think are at the core, what people want to say and be connected to. And, and last thing I would say is, I know we brought this up in your last major presentation about Pajaro recovery, Ms. Callen, was the lessons learned, right? I think getting that feedback of what could be done better and what, and not just tell us what, what, what could we have done better, but then let's have recommendations for improving our policies. As we know, more storms are going to be, it's going, they're going to become more frequent. I think those would be another way to engage, to provide a list of recommendations. What could we do better? For example, the, the train communities, we didn't, we had volunteers coming together last minute to do the door-to-door walks, right? That should be, we should have a policy and a protocol, and people ready to go for the next time that this, hopefully not, but if it happens again, we have that protocols to improve our shelter services, and making sure there's follow-up on our social workers. There's a, just, there's many examples of that where I think they, from their feedback, we could say, we're going to change our policies so that next time we're in the same situation, we will deliver services better for them. One big one was not mixing our unhoused homeless populations with our families was another one. A very simple policy, but would have avoided a lot of the issues that arose when we actually had shelters up and running. So I'm just hoping that that, that is a place for also to, for, for that, for the community to be able to engage and make, make some good policy changes to our protocols when emergencies come up. Yes?
Yeah, mine are more framed as comments and suggestions. And so, I want to turn up the heat on Vicente a little bit here and just say, in my opinion, one, I'm hoping that we can really focus on evenings and weekends as well, especially Sundays, for obvious reasons. And then, the second piece for me would be that a year seems like a long time from now. And I know that we, in government time, that's extremely fast, but for a community who's just gone through something like this, that will feel like a long time. And so, just anything we can do, even if it is spending a little more money upfront to bring in additional help to get us there. But I know it's a process that takes time. But if there are any of those needs to speed it up, to get us to a point where we can be at the point of implementation more quickly, I would appreciate that.
Absolutely. And to your point, I would also like a very, a quicker planning effort. I think what they're putting forward is very mindful, and we'll, of course, try to expedite the process. One of the things that Vicente and Daniel have brainstormed is, what are some immediate projects we can start doing now so that people do see progress right away, and not two years from now, while we're going through this very mindful planning effort? And so, we concur with every single statement that's been said here. And when I say that we talk about this, just about every minute of every day, I'm not exaggerating. So, we, we concur with what you've, with the vision that you've set forward, and what the community has been asking for. And we, we're trying to make this as mindful as possible, based on the community need. So thank you for the comments.
I'll just add to, I mean, not just weekends and evenings, right, but making sure we have interpretation, you know, doing this work in a bilingual, if not in a trilingual working environment. You know, we're thinking about, you know, the need for childcare, you know, things like that, right? Because we can ask folks to show up, but if we're not providing the support for them to be there, they're not going to show up. So we're very mindful in terms of like, you know, how are we going to create that space for working families who have a lot on their plate, to be able to participate as much as possible. The other piece too, I'll just say, is, you know, we want to make sure, you know, we've, we've thrown out the idea of, you know, can we, because, you know, I think there's also a question about resources, you know? Is there an opportunity to maybe provide compensation to the resident leaders for participating? You know, that's another idea that we've thought about, that might support them, and be able to participate fully. In terms of the timeline, you know, we're trying to strike a balance. One of our main goals for this project is to make sure that we have solid relationships with, with, with the stakeholders of Pajaro. And so, we really want to make sure that we are moving the plan forward, but also giving enough time for us to build those relationships with, with those stakeholders, because we know that once that document is drafted, if, we, we need to have a solid group of community in Pajaro who's going to continue to move that plan forward. And I think the relationships that we build with those, with folks in Pajaro will make, you know, will help us move that agenda forward. So it's, it's, it's a little bit of a balancing act, right? Because we don't want to move too fast without building those relationships, but we also don't want to sit on our hands and make, and let too much time go by. So it's a little bit of a delicate balance that, that we're trying to strike. But I appreciate the urgency, and I think there is no doubt that that sense of urgency is felt across the board.
And I look forward to calling upon my fellow department heads to support our efforts, and including more staff. So thank you for that support, Supervisor Lopez.
Supportive here too. Any other board members before we go to the public? Not, seeing none, then we'll go to the members of the public who would like to speak on this item, and we'll start with those in the audience. And we'll allow two minutes, and then we'll go to those on Zoom.
Daniel, I did not expect to speak on this, but being a longtime resident of the 95076 area code, which I believe the chair and I have shared in common, I don't think the region looks at Pajaro as an isolated entity. Watsonville and Pajaro are a community that is deeply integrated in the Santa Cruz County, and Monterey County have a shared responsibility. So I'm hoping that there is work that engages the Santa Cruz County Emergency Services Team and Planning Team, and the city of Watsonville, where I know, I spoke to, to the administrator yesterday, and he was expressing concern about Pajaro's recovery. And I think that's also when you look at the headwaters of the Pajaro River, and its tendrils into San Benito and Santa Clara County, this is a regional issue of the first magnitude that I think it's appropriate for the board to reach out to neighboring boards and try to engage some form of collaborative action. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, let's go to those on Zoom.
Linda McLone? Hi, yes, thank you. I want to just echo Supervisor Lopez's comments, and just clarify, are you saying that some of the intermediate needs that are covered by AB 102, like housing repair and vehicle repairs, that the $20 million cannot be used for that for about a year?
You can make your comments, and we'll answer your questions at the very end. We'll have staff respond later. Anything else?
No, that's my question. It could be a full year before you can do some of the things, the very essential things that people need right now, in, in any sooner than one year from now.
Thank you. We take all public comments, and then we ask staff to respond at the very end, after we hear from everyone. Thank you. Anyone else?
Teresa Linhan?
Teresa, you're up.
Looks like she put her hand down.
Okay.
Ramon Cancino?
Good evening, Supervisors. This is Ray Cancino, CEO of Community Bridges. Just wanted to speak on this item today. Obviously, we are incredibly supportive of the staff recommendation to move forward on this long-term task force that is going to be able to prepare and also be informed by the community. We just wanted to make sure that this information doesn't just live within the task force, but that it does inform other partnering groups, like the Long-Term Recovery Group, or the Long-Term Recovery Alliance. I think that it's incredibly important that we use data-informed strategies, and that we use that data-informed strategies to inform other, other efforts that are also operating in the same direction. So we're all kind of moving in the singular direction, and not just basing our assumptions on old narratives, or based on fears, or just those people that show up angrily in some of these meetings. But it's really inclusive of the whole community. Obviously, we're always there to support the efforts of Monterey County. Our offices are open, and we can work around on offering some scheduled time in our new offices that we have there in Pajaro. And we look forward to kind of partnering with this task force in whatever capacity the county deems it necessary and means, deems it appropriate. So we look forward to this being kind of the epicenter of how we can all move as a community forward, and we hope that the information does get relayed to other partnering groups. So there is alignment and coordination for this community. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cancino. Next person.
Teresa Linehan?
Teresa, we're trying, we can't hear you. Anyone else?
Nope.
Last shot, Teresa?
Hello, hello?
Yes, all right.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I'm Sister Rosa De Lares, and I am here representing Casa de la Cultura in Pajaro, who have been here 30 years, and the Pajaro Disaster Long-Term Recovery Alliance, which I am the chairperson. First of all, I would like to thank Supervisor Alejo for the beautiful, wonderful summary that you have given us. Okay. But perhaps I missed the, the, the comment about the progress of the Pajaro River, of the levy. That's one of the questions and concerns that people have constantly. That's one. I also am beginning to receive calls from residents at the roadway end, because they are concerned their county support ends on July 31, and so what's going to happen August the 1st? Also, we at the Pajaro Disaster Long-Term Recovery has been assured that the title of the presentation, today's presentation, would change for more clarification, because it's, it's causing confusion in the county, in the state, Pajaro residents, because of the title, Long-Term Recovery. The county Pajaro, the residents, has the continued support of FEMA through the VALE program of FEMA, and that is through the Pajaro Disaster Long-Term Recovery Alliance. Does that mean that the county, the county can do it alone? No, as we have heard. Can the Pajaro Disaster Long-Term Recovery do it alone? No, absolutely. I call for unity and clarification before you approve this plan. I encourage you to have meaningful discussions regarding the unity and the need for transparency from the county, so that both can assure a united front for the people of Pajaro to help bring systemic changes.
Thank you, Sister Rosa.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else in the audience? Last call. Don't see anyone? Okay, we'll bring this back now. We'll start with Supervisor Church.
Thank you. I first just want to really thank Kelsey and Daniel and Vicente. I think this is a extraordinarily impressive proposal. It, it's detailed, it, it reaches out to the community in ways that have not ever been reached out before. And I think it opens a path so that we don't have the problems that have gone on, such as in 95, when there was a flood, and there was discussion of doing things, and nothing happens. That isn't going to happen this time. There is something that's going to happen. We have some funding for it. We have a solid plan. We have dedicated people. And I'm just, I'm really impressed by what's been put forth, and the efforts to, to really engage everybody in this community, because that's exactly what has to happen. It has to have everybody in the community. One of the, one of the lines in this report, or in the board report that, that came out here, was, refers to whole community engagement. And I just, I'm just going to read it, because I think it really touches upon a key part of here. "The main goal of this planning effort is to build community ownership, to ensure the Pajaro community have a direct say over what is needed to survive and thrive." And I don't think anything can really get the gist of this, of this effort than that right there. You know, and we're doing something with this that is very different than I think we've done on other disaster-related issues, or even just in our programmatic outreach. I've, I've often made the comments up here that when we go and we reach out to communities, we're reaching out to the stakeholders and not to the people. And this is, this is including the people in ways that we really haven't done before. It's, again, you need the stakeholders, you need the people, you need, need everybody. This is, what I like about this is seeing a, the direction coming from bottom up and not top down. And I think that's really the real strength of this is, is that it, it is putting together a, a plan to, to bring everybody in here together, to really make something that is, there's really maybe be a model on just, again, not on just the disaster issues, but on how we outreach into our community. And so, again, you know, I, I want to thank the three of you for putting this together. It just, it's, it's really exceptional onto that. And, you know, to, to address, you know, Sister Rosa's comments on, on long-term recovery, and I think that's very, very important, because we don't want to have these two groups confused. And yet, I think part of the thing is that we're doing here is, we're not doing really just recovery and bringing Pajaro back to what it was, because if we bring it back to what it was, we're bringing back neglect. You know, we don't want to do that, because it's been neglected. We're going to do something better with this. And Supervisor Alejo, I think, you know, made reference to this over on the Watsonville side. It's a, it's a different world. What they've changed there in 20 years is, is impressive. And you go across that river, and you don't, you see something that is like, like it was 20 years ago, 30 years ago, 50 years ago. And it really hasn't changed. You know, I'm been just outside this community my entire life, and my grandparents lived shortly not too far outside of there. Both my parents taught there. My oldest, my sisters went to school there, and my oldest sister experienced the, the flood in 55. You know, I, I know myself from growing up, I haven't seen that community change much. We have a chance now to make it change. And I, I think that's really exciting. Part of it is already going to be happening. The, the roadwork on Selenus, on Selenus Road is planned, and there's going to be, you know, the sidewalks are going to be fixed and planned onto that. There's going to be some trees planted onto that. There's also plans on, on doing paving on the side streets here in the next couple of years. This is beyond what we've been discussing here with this, this plan. So that's going to be done. There's, there's, there's going to be, you know, work done on the porterhouse, and pulling together some, you know, the library, and I'm a community, a little bit of a community center out of there. So there's already steps being done, and this is just going to enhance that. It gives us a, a, just a unbelievable opportunity. And, and this time, in Monterey County, it's not going to drop the ball on these folks. And I am, I am just, again, you know, really, really impressed with this, this team that's together on this, and their ability to, you know, to reach out to, to everybody. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments, Supervisor Church, and your commitment to Pajaro. Other folks, last round of comments before we move on to the next item. Anything else? And I, I would just add, what I didn't say earlier was, I think we also, yeah, the county has some properties or investments. As I mentioned, the porterhouse is a very beautiful building, I think underutilized. And I think there could be a lot more resources coming from that. And I know Ms. Caboasa and folks at our facilities are working on that, and there's a timeline to get that, there was some damage done to that building. But just moving forward, I mean, that amazing historical building has a lot more potential to bring more resources there for the communities. So I hope that could be, certainly be part of the discussion. And certainly, we also have some units of, of low-income housing on Kent's Court. That's not in your department, but it's one of those other areas that we have to also bring those units back into good condition, so those, those housing units can be utilized. But as Supervisor Church was saying, because I completely agree, we, the goal should be getting Pajaro in a better position, not, not just in its prior state, but in a better position. And I think, I always thought, there should be a referral beyond just the planning, the long-term recovery. always thought there should be a referral beyond just the planning, long term recovery, planning that you're proposing here, a proposal for revitalization and beautification, coming up with a plan for Pajaro so that our county is intentional on pursuing grant opportunities, making investments. And we know money is not limitless. So we have to at least have a plan to know what areas of the community we want to improve. And there should be a process for that. So this kind of dovetails on to bringing the community together beyond just disaster recovery, but also just planning for revitalization and beautification of that community. And I think that's long overdue. And if Supervisor Church does a referral, I will support you on that. But that way, we have actually have our HCD department actually working on coming up with the plan for that community. So in the aftermath of the floods, the the community is not saying, we got some temporary money, one time money, it was a planning for a year, a year and a half, and then what? I want us to say, no, we're working on this, but we're also looking at the long term future of Pajaro so that we could make some investments in the future. And I think that's, that would complement the work that this committee would do and would also tell the community that we're trying to find every way possible to bring better changes in the short and long term to their community. Great things are happening. Hopefully, as I said earlier, on the Pajaro River Levy Protection Project, also on the the plan to bring a Pajaro train station, that's in the works. And we know that trains projects take a long time, but that would certainly be a game changer for the community as well. So but I want all these pieces to work with each other, complement each other. And the community knows that there is efforts to bring resources and more opportunities to their community. Some of these just take, unfortunately, take some time in the state of California. But that's all I want to say. Anyone else? Last call here? Thank you very much. I really appreciate all your leadership on this.
Thank you.
There was a question for the public.
Yeah, there were a couple I can address.
If you want to.
So with regards to the money, and exactly to the points you all have made is, we don't want to use it to put Band-Aids on wounds or on gaping wounds, essentially. We want to have long term change and we want the money to look at sustainable, long term risk reduction. And unfortunately, right now, we're not in a position to recommend utilizing the money for individual assistance. If that's something that the board would like for us to do, we can certainly, you know, provide a proposal. But our intention, since vehicle replacement and repairs are considered are a component under FEMA individual assistance, it's at this time not necessarily recommended. But if, you know, given the recommendation, we will put together proposal. Throughout the process, though, we're hoping that the community can continue to engage with us in listening sessions and through Supervisor Church's office. So if obviously there's an overwhelming need for something immediately, absolutely, we can come to the board with a recommendation. With regards to Sister Rosa's comments, absolutely, we totally agree and think that everything that she just said was 100% in alignment with what we've just presented and anticipate continuing to work with our long term recovery group. With regard to NCS, we are working with case management to consider or to continue to find supporting options for housing those currently in non-congruent sheltering. So hopefully, we can have more information in the coming days as we approach, oh, my goodness, August 1. And then Supervisor Alejo, with regards to your comments about HCD, my colleague, Director Spencer, sorry, has already agreed to lend some of his best planners to lead the Housing and Community Development Task Force within or Subcommittee within the task force. And the intent, as you have said, is to have those plans overlap and concurrently updated. So we're not duplicating effort and we're ensuring that the work that's done here continues on for generations, not just until the next flood.
Right. Okay. See nothing further. Thank you very much. Appreciate your leadership and look forward to staying in touch with all your work coming up in the next several months.
Thank you. See you next month.
Yep. Okay, everybody, known action was needed. That was just to receive a presentation. We're going to go ahead and is the, are they counted yet?
I don't.
Item 16?
I don't see them yet.
Okay, we'll go to item 15 then. This is adopting a resolution of intent to amend the contract between the CalPERS system and the County of Monterey around a partial service retirement for miscellaneous members and local safety members. And this is a presentation by Ariana Hurtado, our Assistant Director of Human Services, Melissa Zamora, Senior Risk and Benefits Analyst, and Charles Harris, Dr. Harris. One and only.
Good afternoon, Chair Alejo and Board members. Ariana Hurtado, Assistant Director of Human Resources. And joining me today, as you mentioned, is Melissa Zamora, Senior Employee Benefits Analyst and our Natividad CEO, Dr. Charles Harris. We are here to talk to you today to request that the board consider adopting a resolution of intention to amend the contract between CalPERS and the county to add a section for partial service retirement that would allow county employees designated as local miscellaneous and local safety members to participate in such a program. We're also requesting that the board consider adopting a resolution to approve Policy 241, Partial Service Retirement Program, and direct the Human Resources Department to continue to collaborate with the County Administrative Office as well as the Office of the County Council to be able to implement this program in the county. So to give you a little bit of background in terms of the how this program or the concept came about, Human Resources Department has held discussions with some of our departments. And through those discussions, it was very quickly identified an operational need to add additional tools in the realm of succession planning that would allow departments to allow departments just a little bit more time to retain employees who have announced their retirement plans and allow for the transition of either very specialized skillsets or just years of institutional knowledge. So we would like today to start with having Melissa provide just a general overview of what the policy entails. And then we would invite Dr. Harris to also provide from the departmental lens, some of the operational benefits of bringing a partial service retirement program to our agency. So with that, I'll hand it over to Melissa.
Thank you so much. Again, Melissa Zamora, Senior Benefits Analyst. Yes, the partial service retirement would allow employees in a full time status to reduce their work schedule by 20 to 60% of their work schedule. The this would allow employees to begin to receive benefits from their retirement system on a reduced benefit. So essentially, the employee will receive two checks, one check from the County of Monterey for actual hours worked, and another, a separate check from the from CalPERS for their retirement benefit. In order to be eligible for this program, the employee will need to be considered a full time employee as defined by the policy. They would need to have have met retirement eligibility through CalPERS, which will require the five years of service, and to be the minimum age of retirement in response to their benefit formula. So for example, if you have an employee who is a 2% at 55 retirement formula, they must be at least 55 years of age to receive PS, partial service retirement. And of course, it also is required for departmental need for the employee to have that specific skillset or institutional knowledge that the department requires. During this program, the employee is considered an active employee of the county, and therefore, health insurance would be continuing to be paid for by the county. One of the the bigger benefits of this program for the employee is that the employee would receive full flex credits or full county contribution to the towards their health insurance as outlined in their prospective MOU or PPPR. We all know that with health insurance, this is one of the key benefits for retirees. When during the employee participation in PSR or partial service retirement, I'm sorry, I tend to use the acronym, the employee would continue to accrue service credit prorated based on actual hours worked. So for example, an employee who has reduced their FTE to a 0.5 or half time, it typically would take them two months of work to receive one month of service credit under the CalPERS benefits. Any other benefits such as annual leave, PTO, sick leave will be prorated based on the employee's FTE. With this program, the department head would contact the CAO or Administrative Officer to request approval for an employee to participate in partial service retirement. The the department head can request an initial two year appointment and then subsequently request two additional one year appointments for a total of four years. In order for us to implement this new program, it is a two step approach. The first step is today, we are asking you to approve the resolution of intent to amend the contract. If approved, we do, we would then come back in September to request that you approve a second resolution to actually approve the amendment of the contract with CalPERS. And therefore, we would then be able to establish and implement the partial service retirement.
Thank you, Dr. Harris.
Thank you. Thank you, Melissa and Ariana. And good afternoon, members of the Board of Supervisors and members of the public. Just really want to thank the Ariana, Melissa, and the rest of the county team for looking into this. I was asked to come before you all and talk to you what what from my perspective and Natividad as Department of the County wise, it's important. You know, we're really lucky in this county and have fantastic employees. Many have been here for many, many, many years with the great breadth of institutional knowledge, skill, expertise. To me, this this is really another tool in our in our proverbial tool chest on retaining really strong employees as they as they transition into different phases of their life, in this case, retirement. And how do we work with them to really retain those folks ultimately for for them, what works best, but also for us as an employer here at the county and specifically Natividad. And Natividad specifically, I can tell you, this would really help on the front of nursing, retaining great nurses that are transitioning, lab folks, radiology techs, physicians, et cetera, across our various job classes. I just think it would be a fantastic new element that we could use to retain folks and of course, in long term succession planning. So thank you for considering.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. And with that, the Human Resources Department stands ready to receive a direction from the board or answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Let's go to questions first by the board and we'll start Supervisor Adams.
Thank you. I do just have two questions. Thank you again for the presentation. Are there any examples of other CalPERS jurisdictions that have a program like this one?
Absolutely. We actually have some local examples. City of Monterey was a particular agency that we took a look at. And then I believe it's County of Santa Cruz, who also has a similar program.
And in the long term, does this, the cost impact to the county? Are we saving money or does it cost us money?
So much like other questions related to human resources, the answer is it depends. So
It's a lawyer's answer.
So it really does depend on the department's operational need. If it's a position that we are going to remain with the reduced FT, it could actually result in some salary savings because the person is essentially working part time and that full time position isn't being backfilled. But there may be some instances where departments have, again, just some very specialized operational needs where they may have to backfill that position, meaning have the full time replacement in place and have this employee maybe cross train. So in that situation, we would be working with the Budget Office and the CAO's office to request allocations on loan potentially. But overall, it's anticipated and designed in a way that it could provide some salary savings to departments.
And then finally, what is the relationship between this and retired annuitants?
So the the biggest difference, and I'll let Melissa provide some additional information, but the biggest difference is that under this program, as Melissa explained, employees are not considered to be retired under the definition of CalPERS. The retired annuitants, they're fully retired, they've gone through the retirement process, and they're allowed to come back and work for a limited number of hours. In this situation, the 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 limit would be that four year period, but they're not technically recognized as being fully retired under CalPERS. And they continue to accrue those service credits.
Thank you. Thank you.
Others? Don't see any other colleagues with questions. Let's go to members of the public. Any comments on this item? Item 15. Nobody in chambers, nobody on Zoom. We'll bring this back for a motion. We need a resolution of intention to amend the contract with CalPERS and the county.
So moved.
Moved by Supervisor Lopez, second by Adams. Excuse me. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Your time. We're going to go back to item number 16. This is the item, the Prop 218, propose annual assessment for CSA number 25 property owners in the at Quail Lodge. So we have to report out, I think, the votes of the protest, protest vote.
Yes, the votes have been counted and I'll have Adam Marston go over the the details.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the board. I'm going to explain kind of a little bit what I'm going to read out first, just so it makes sense. So first, I will talk about the total ballots received, give you the percentage of what that was of what was sent out. Then I'll move into basically what the supportive percentage was. And as mentioned in the public hearing, these are weighted ballots. So I will give you the weighted percentages as well. So of the 225 ballots that were sent out, 128 ballots were returned. That is a return rate of 58.99%. The total assessment amount of those ballots is equal to $68,248.10. That supported, that amount is made up of 93 ballots in support, or 72.66% of the return ballots for a total supportive assessment amount of $49,944.04, which indicates by the weighted ballot returns is a 73.18% supportive rate, which leaves us with a protest of 26.82%. So we have, do not have a negative protest in this case.
So therefore, this means it is the 218 is approved.
That is correct. And the board may, you may take the action to assess the assessments.
Okay, so with that, that information on the record, then I'll ask our County Council for the proper, proper language, I guess, too. So we do this right?
Just a motion to adopt the resolution implementing the assessments as referenced in the
Easy, easy one. All right. Would you have a motion? By Lopez? Oh, a second by Adams? All those in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. I hadn't done a Prop 218, I think. Yeah, good to see that.
First one we've had.
Yeah. It's its own unique process in Salas through the ballot initiative. All right, we're going to item number 17 to receive an oral report from UC Santa Cruz on the Economic Development Administration Regional Technology and Innovation Hub, otherwise called Tech Hub's Grant Proposal, and consider adopting a resolution authorizing the CAO or designated to join the Greater Salinas Advanced Air Mobility Coalition being led by UCSC, and to submit a proposal for the EDA Tech Hub's Grant. This was something that came to the Economic Development Committee, but we thought it was significant enough that this should come to the attention of all five county supervisors because I think it is innovative. And there's been a lot of collaboration to make this happen. And hopefully Monterey County could win this designation. With us is Richard Vaughn, Economic Development Manager, and Larry Samuels, our Senior Advisor to the Chancellor of UC Santa Cruz.
Thank you, Chair Alejo, or Supervisors. I've got a presentation. I have a voice for those of you that had to sit through it last week. Actually, can be heard now. The first question that was addressed last week was an interesting one, which is what is a tech hub? And the tech hub is actually a, it's a term that was coined during the 1970s because of what happened in Silicon Valley. You had the university and a few companies that spread out into an entire network of industry around technology and revitalized in a region. There are several examples of this. Austin, Texas is an example. Boston, Massachusetts is a sample. Boise, Idaho. And in all these cases, the general ingredients are a university or more than one, some form of pioneering technology, and a skilled workforce or a workforce that can become skilled. The EDA around two months ago. around two months ago signaled that they were going to launch a NOFO for a new type of tech hub. So a tech hub that was looking at smaller, more rural oriented areas with a, the Metropolitan Service Area target sub two hundred and fifty thousand people with strategic technology of national importance that could be through the help of the EDA turned into a tech hub within approximately ten years. So that combination of rural, underserved workforce, strategic technologies, and engaged higher education institutions really rang true to those of us that have been looking at the Joby Aviation efforts and also that are aware of the fact that not only is Joby in this region, but you also have Archer Aviation working out of the Salinas Airport, Wisk Aviation working out of the Hollister Airport, and Zero Avia, which is a hydrogen aircraft company working out of the Hollister Airport. That kind of intensity in terms of concentration of, of what we would call EV tolls, electric vehicle takeoff and landing aircraft is unique in the world. Our belief is, is that we as a region have a viable play in this. That having been said, the odds are stacked stacked against us. There are twenty of these hubs that are going to be designated across the United States. We are looking at three in the Western United States, of which State of California is only open for two. And yet, in terms of the type of technology, the partnerships that we have, and the unique profile that we offer, our friends within the EDA are assuring us that we have a significant opportunity here. The first phase is a designation phase in which you submit to the EDA a five plus page summary of what your region offers. And you articulate what the coalition that you have put together offers. This is a critical, critical piece. It's not typical for the EDA to look at a region and say, not only do we want the university engaged and the metropolitan or the county state agencies, we actually want private industry actively engaged to the point of signing up as members of a coalition and articulating what their responsibilities will be within that coalition. We have that. We have now gotten commitments from the three major EV toll players in the region to join the coalition. We have the universities in the region. We have all the community colleges in the region. We have workforce entities within the region, all joining the coalition. And we're looking to submit for designation on the fifteenth of August. Because bureaucracies are what they are, internally, we're saying the first of August because that might mean that we actually get there on time. And we do have to submit this to the UC Santa Cruz offers sponsored programs to process and submit to the EDA as the lead agency. And that will take at least a week and perhaps a week and a half. So Phase Two occurs in the fall. If you are one of the twenty entities that are designated, then the EDA has committed to loosening the purse strings for grants ranging from fifty to seventy five million dollars for the purposes of, in large part, workforce development. Well, I mean, for most of us, we recognize the need in this region as critical. The key technology focus area is obvious. We know what we've got around here that's of relatively exotic typology. We know that the lab to pipeline piece of this technology, which is probably the hydrogen piece and, and the building of an entire infrastructure across the state is something that's going to require a skilled workforce that does not exist to this time. So this technology is new. And as was evidenced by the shipment of Joby's first unit straight off to Edwards Air Force Base, there are national security interests around this type of technology. Further requirements are the job creation numbers, the demographic preference, the focus on equity and diversity that are within every national initiative right now, and the coalition with the engagement component to it. So these letters of support that are going out are not gee, ain't this great? We'd like to be part of this. It's this is what we will do. As an educational institution, this is how we will participate. And the idea of the use of proceeds is to turn around and take this amalgamated coalition and articulate the needs for a workforce center to use the M Best land that's adjacent to the FAA space at Marina Airport to build a workforce center, use that workforce training center to train first past workers for these three slash four companies. But then further, to train faculty and instructors at regional community colleges so that they're able to turn around and start to create curricular programs and certificate programs within these institutions and scale this to a regional and then subsequently a statewide effort. What we would like to see is, is why we would like to see the, the County of Monterey sign up as a coalition member. What that involves is it involves your continued support to help us drive this through. I don't see significant financial, you know, commitments entailed at this point. This is a grant coming from the EDA that will be used to build a space. We're likely to go to the state and ask for ancillary funds to build out this coalition of post-secondary institutions, all oriented towards this one workforce aim. But by the same token, when Governor Newsom left from his trip here two and a half weeks ago, the one thing he carried away from his visit was there's a workforce initiative in this region that's successful and needs to be funded. So our hope is, is that this EDA fund might be the beginnings of that, but that we can go to the state and secure subsequent funding. That's, that's the extent of that, Richard.
Yeah. And so just to inform the board, economic development has been working with UCSC and with the coalition currently, not being a, a named member. But we did take this item to the Economic Development Committee recently, and it did receive support to go ahead and move forward to the board, to go ahead and become an active coalition member as part of this group and submitting the grant proposal to EDA.
Great. And, and, and again, when is that deadline? I know it's early August. The date, was it?
As soon as we can get it.
As soon as you can get it. Okay. And then on, on the recommended motion is not only to be adopting a resolution authorizing the CEO or designated to join the Greater Salinas Advanced Mobility, Air Mobility Coalition and to some, who's submitting the proposal done. Do, do, are we also sending a support letter or anything else?
Attached with the item is a resolution. And so we wanted to make this more of a partnership, seeing that EDA is not looking for, you know, just a standard template support letter. They're looking at, you know, what is the county going to do working with this coalition?
Awesome. Um, let's bring it back for comments from the board. Supervisor Adams.
Thank you. I think this, obviously, this resolution is just framed around a major opportunity for our whole region. And the fact that we're in the center of advanced air mobility is both daunting and absolutely thrilling at the same time. And I know the economic impact upon our area is being part of the focus of the emerging technology is going to raise the bar for, for all of us. The potential jobs that are being, going to be available for the residents, really good paying jobs, capable of lifting people out of any kind of a path to poverty into really successful careers, allowing them to thrive again. So I'm totally hopeful that we all agree to join the coalition because I think it's going to be of tremendous benefit to this whole part of our state. And it's a real wonderful opportunity for us to get our feet in and to show support the companies that we have here that are just doing amazing work. So I could not be happier and I would love to make a motion to adopt the resolution when the appropriate time comes.
All right, we'll, we'll come back to you. There's not, let me take it to the public first. Any comments from the public on this item? Don't see anybody in chambers, anybody online. Okay, now we'll bring you back to, to our board for last comments and, and we'll go to Supervisor Jaski first.
Thank you. I'll second your motion, Supervisor Adams. And I just want to, I think that, I think that we gave some clear direction when, when this, when sort of as these things have been coming forward to us. And I want to thank our economic development team and our CAO for just pursuing every option that we have. Larry, thank you for being a part of this. The coalition with UC Santa Cruz, the M Best property, the, the innovative technologies that we have sort of creating additional opportunity. The workforce development piece is this sort of additional one. And, and I think we, we have these challenges with housing in our, in our region. And the, the logical solution to that is there are people and families and individuals who are already living here, who've made this their home, and to find those ways to really invest in the, the workforce development so that, so that we, we, we can, we can help, we can help those in our local industrial workforce already see that there's a path that they can earn more money, that they can have benefits, that they can have a career that's going to take care of their family, as well as for all of the young people coming up through our educational systems. We have the smartest, brightest, most, you know, creative kids in our schools. And for them to be able to have a path that allows them to stay here, to work here, to grow their lives here and benefit, you know, these sort of really big visionary, innovative visionary, mission driven employment opportunities is really exciting. So thank you for the work to prep us up, to get this, get in front of us before our break, first of all. Thank you for the partnership. Really excited to move forward. And I will just say again, to reiterate our commitment as a board to continue pursuing and looking at where we can find additional opportunities to be clear about our commitment to supporting this type of economic development in our region. It's very exciting.
Thank you. Other comments? Supervisor Lopez.
Yeah, just, you know, I agree with Supervisor Askew in that greatest detriment to this region, I think, for a long time has been the brain drain of so many young people. And so this is an opportunity to give them a way to come home. CGI used to use the term onshoring, where they would go to communities that needed the investment, where they might be able to pay a little less, but keep people at home who had the skills. And I see this as sort of a, a projection of that old model, which is now old, I think that was thirty years ago. But it's a great investment. I think the partnership that we're investing in, in both time and treasure is one that's important for all of us. And I look forward to continuing to solve problems together. And I think this is a great way to kick off that partnership.
Supervisor Church?
I just, very briefly on, on it, I, you know, follow a really basic all of the supervisor's comments. It's a great step and, you know, opens up opportunities, obviously. And just part what makes this area, I think, is, is we, we move into, to, to new directions. And especially this, this line in the tech area that I, you know, I think it allows us to diversify and become, become just more vibrant. So really, thank you for all your efforts.
And then I'll just close, first of all, to thank both of you for being really proactive in, in having this vision to bring this tech hub to this region. I also want to just say thank you to Chancellor Sintilarive to see UC Santa Cruz more engaged with Monterey County. We all knew M Best was there for a long time, but just never saw any proposal or ideas of how to best utilize that property, to not, to not see you here and bringing the community together behind this and creating this coalition to support this proposal that, that really supports bringing more green and clean transportation innovation to our area. As everyone said, also job opportunities for our communities. And just being at the Joby event, you're able to see a diverse workforce at all levels, you know, from the top positions to the, to the rank and file. I was impressed to see people from many walks of life, many ages that, for me, that they go, this is what we want, the type of employers, the, the, and jobs we want in our community. And it seemed like the employees were really proud of working there. And certainly, I, I support bringing more of those opportunities for more of our residents and giving them those skill sets. So also, this obviously brings seventy five million, but as you're saying, the opportunities to bring even more to the region as well.
Yeah, Chair, I, I think that our attitude is, is irrespective of whether the funding comes through the EDA, we're going to go after state funding at an educational level for this. You've got a consortium of higher ed institutions. You have the proximity to the FAA space. It's really an ideal situation. So, and, you know, UCSC deeply appreciates its relationship to Monterey County and also appreciates its underutilization of the M Best property to date. But I expect I will be sitting in this chair quite a bit over the next twenty four months. And we'll be discussing a number of opportunities.
Look, look forward to that. So with that, I think it was important for the public and all our board to show our support for making this happen and because it is, it would be definitely a win win in many different ways for our communities. So with that, you, you were going to make a formal motion, make, make a formal motion?
Yes, I will. Or her designee to join the Greater Salinas Advanced Air Mobility Coalition being led by UCSC to submit a proposal to the EDA for Tech Hubs Grant.
So the second, okay, second by Supervisor Jaski. All those in favor?
Aye.
Please say aye. Aye. Those against, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We're going to item eighteen now. This is Bixby Rock LLC adopting a mitigated negative declaration pursuant, pursuant to sequel guidelines. And we're going to go to our presenter Fiona Jensen, Senior Planner. Who'll lead the way on this.
Good afternoon, Chair Leeho and members of the board. My name is Fiona Jensen. I am presenting the Bixby Rock LLC application, HDD planning file number PLN two one zero two two eight. The property is located at three nine one four zero Highway one Monterey and is within the Big Sur Coastal Land Use Plan. The parcel is zoned watershed and scenic conservation, forty acres per unit with a design control overlay within the coastal zone. The proposed project includes demolition of an existing single family dwelling and construction of a replacement single family dwelling, development within the critical view shed, within one hundred feet of environmentally sensitive habitat area, within fifty feet of a coastal bluff and a conservation scenic easement amendment. On June tenth, twenty twenty three, the project was heard by the Monterey County Planning Commission, at which the commission recommended adoption of the draft mitigated negative declaration and approval of the project as proposed. Due to the project's inclusion of a conservation and scenic easement amendment, the Board of Supervisors is the appropriate authority to consider the combined development permit. In nineteen sixty eight, a conservation scenic easement was granted to the County of Monterey over the entirety of the property. The current easement deed limits the property from conducting routine fuel management, removing invasive plant species, or replacing the existing septic system. The proposed easement deed amendment would continue to prohibit new structures, alteration of the topography and advertisement, but would allow for invasive plant species removal, fuel management, replacement of utilities, and restoration activities. The proposed project also includes citing the residents further west to reduce its visibility from Highway one. As such, an amendment to the conservation scenic easement map is also proposed. The project is located on a coastal bluff between Highway one and the Pacific Ocean. Portions of the south and eastern facades of the existing residence are entirely visible for approximately one point two miles when traveling northbound on Highway one. The proposed residence is located primarily within the existing footprint and therefore will be visible from similar Highway one vantage points. However, due to project design, sighting, and colors and materials, the residence will blend in better with the surrounding natural environment. The project components will result in a reduced visual impact and is consistent with the Big Sur Coastal Land Use Plan policy relating to the replacement of structures within the critical view shed. The proposed residence would be entirely within previously disturbed areas and therefore minimizes potential disturbance to environmentally sensitive habitat areas. Mitigation measures have been applied to result in less than significant impacts on biological resources. The project is also within fifty feet of a coastal bluff. All proposed development is adequately set back from the top of the bluff and the geological and geotechnical reports have concluded that the proposed development will not impact the coastal bluff. On April twenty sixth, twenty twenty two, the Big Sur Land Use Advisory Committee voted to support the project with changes including confirmation that the windows are non-reflective and the addition of native vegetation along the western elevation. On June second, twenty twenty two, the Historical Resource Review Board reviewed the project and unanimously found that the main residence does not retain historical and historical integrity and recommended approval of the project as proposed. The county prepared a draft initial study and mitigated negative declaration for the project. The draft ISMD identified potentially project. The draft ISM and D identified potentially significant impacts to biological resources and land use and planning. Staff has proposed mitigation measures to reduce identified impacts to a level of less than significant. Adoption of the ISM and D and mitigation monitoring and reporting program would require the applicant complies with 11 conditions of approval and nine mitigation measures. The circulated initial study was revised with minor amplification and clarification changes relating to the project description, aesthetics, and biological resources. No additional comments were received during circulation period. Staff recommends the Board of Supervisors adopt a mitigated negative declaration pursuant to sequel guidelines section 15074, approve the project as presented, including acceptance of the conservation scenic easement amendment, and adopt a mitigation monitoring and reporting program. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you. Open up for questions. Anyone? Seen no questions. Take it to the public for any comments on this item. Item 18 on Bixby Rock LLC. I don't see anybody in chambers, nobody online. So then we'll come back, bring it to the board for a motion if there's no further discussion.
A little approval.
Second, it's been moved, it's been seconded.
Chair, I would recommend there's a litany of things that need to be approved and authorized. So I would recommend a motion to adopt the mitigated negative declaration pursuant to sequel guidelines section 15074, accept the amended conservation and scenic easement deed for Bixby Rock LLC, and authorize the chair to execute the amended deed and direct the clerk to submit the amended deed to the county recorder for recording at the applicant's sole expense, and approve a combined development permit as indicated in the staff report, and finally adopt a conditioned compliance and mitigation monitoring and reporting plan for the project. That is my recommended motion.
And that is the motion that I will make.
Okay.
And then I will second that one.
Any further discussion on the motion, anybody? This is not a historical house, right?
Correct.
All right. Okay. Thank God.
Want to mention the historical buildings that are remaining in place. That's I think that might be.
You want to do you want to mention the historical buildings that are being kept?
Sure. There is a portion of the property that is currently developed with a remnants of a lime, the Monterey Lime Company infrastructure. And those portions were determined to have potential historical significance, as well as the guest house that was constructed in the 1960s. Those are untouched by the proposed development and will remain historical.
All right. Thank you. All right. So we have a motion to second. So all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those against? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Well, your good work. We are now going to other board matters. So we're going to item number 19, C O comments.
I have a few comments today. We were, we just came back from the National Association of Counties Conference in Austin, Texas. It was very warm in Texas.
It was.
As it is this time of year, apparently every year. So a lot of subject matter covered from working with community based organizations on housing impacted by floods, to disaster risk based methodologies, prevention programs, and partnerships, and also program related to guaranteed income pilots, and building healthy communities through collaboration and commitment, and immigration reform. So there was quite a few subjects covered, and a lot of information shared with our folks across the country. Additionally, there just a reminder, there is an Arts Council reception this evening from five to seven here in this building, which is 168 West Alasol, the government building. And it is really just recognition of the Arts Council displays that they have within our government structure with their view, which are viewable by the public from eight to five during usual workdays. And lastly, there is an A B 1185 listening session still scheduled for tomorrow in the evening via Zoom. So for additional detail, visit our website with that information.
Okay. Any public comments on the C O's report here? Seen none? Then we will go to just new referrals. This is the first readout of a couple of referrals.
Yes, we have three.
Three. Yeah.
Three new referrals. The first is from Supervisor Leho related to the 2023 homeless summit support. The second is from Supervisor Askew, a designation of a U S bicycle route 95 through Monterey County. And the third is from Supervisor Adams, and it's just safeguard and maintain historic buildings in Monterey County. Each of these has been assigned to staff.
Okay, so we'll get this is just a readout. We'll get a report back from staff with more information on all those three new referrals. Any public comments on this first readout? Seen none? Okay, then we'll close that item and we'll go to now to board comments. And since our colleagues, Supervisor Askew endured a lot coming back yesterday, we'll start with you.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank you for announcing the A B 1185 Town Hall meeting tomorrow. Just wanted to clarify for I had a handful of questions come at us. This is a this is a community listening session. It's a chance for my colleagues Supervisor Glenn Church and I to to let the let the public know what we're what we're learning about 1185, and to solicit some feedback from the public about what goals you'd like us to be looking to pursue as we considered studying this issue to bring recommendations back to our colleagues. So we look forward to having everyone join us either in person or via Zoom. I also had the opportunity to spend time in Austin at the National Association of Counties Conference. I do sit on the Health Policy Committee, where we had about 20 health policy resolutions that were approved for addition to the NACO platform, including reproductive rights as a value that we should all be supportive of, and another declaring gun violence prevention as a priority for the organization. I let's see here. Do you want to just for any of our Monterey County residents who are headed to Santa Clara this weekend to see Taylor Swift, I want to say have fun, be safe, and look forward to trading some friendship bracelets with you when you're back in town. So come find me. Thank you.
Supervisor Adams?
Thank you. Just one thing that's coming up this Thursday from 5:30 to 6:30. My team and I are going to be hosting a community meeting for District Five residents. You were working with the Housing Community Development Department to go over the housing element update. We're going to be meeting at Del Mesa Carmel in Carmel Valley, and we will share information about the process, identify locations where housing can be built, and what timeline the county is working on. We are asking people if they want to attend, please RSVP by emailing my office at districtfive@county@co.monterey.ca.us. The meeting room can seat up to 50, but there is standing room beyond that. Couple of things we did last week that were exciting. We my team and I attended the California State Park Aquatic Safety Administration's demonstration event. And it was really interesting. They, you know, some poor guy was in the water intentionally. And they showed exactly what happens from the, you know, the point of the lifeguard station, getting notified, jumping down, running to jumping in the water and and then bringing them back to safety. It was really something. The thing I want to point out about this, though, is that since they put the lifeguard station in down Monastery Beach, there have been no fatalities since that lifeguard station went up. And the chance of someone drowning in a beach where there is a lifeguard station is 18 million to one.
Wow.
So it's really amazing. So it was I was delighted that we have such excellent aquatic protection along our coastline. And then there was also a Caltrans in Tamsi Highway 68 Improvement Project open house at Laguna Seca that was extremely well attended, looking at the various options available as we look at trying to help with the traffic problems on Highway 68 between Salinas Monterey. Thank you.
Thank you much Supervisor Lopez.
First is, I want to say it's a great job on the Monastery Beach. When I was in high school, we called it Mortuary Beach. So great job. And I also want to just share, I was in Austin as well, representing R C R C as well as my role here as a member of the Board of Supervisors, and thoroughly enjoyed the trip, except for that heat. It was no joke. I was glad to be back at 97 in Greenfield last night. So hey, that's much better than the 105 we were facing on the street in Austin. But overall, continue to remind folks that in early August, National Night Out will be taking place throughout all of our communities, and encourage folks to come out and join us. It's going to be a couple of funny evenings out there. So as we go on break, know that there's that we're still around. We're going to be out there, even though we won't be here in these meetings, and encourage folks to reach out. I know my schedule is extremely packed for the next few weeks with a lot of different visits, including Speaker who will be in district here towards the end of the week, visiting some folks in Southern Monterey County. And his team was on the ground, in fact, today at the library in Greenfield, sharing additional resources. But overall, looking forward to this break and taking advantage of the time to reconnect with community. And so wish my colleagues a safe break as well, and look forward to seeing you back here towards the end of August.
All right. Supervisor Church?
Sure. Well, I didn't go to Austin. I stayed here with the fog was nice and enjoyed that. So very briefly, just want to point out that this Sunday is the annual Moss Landing Street Fair. And if it always a great, great turnout out of there. If you haven't been to Moss Landing recently, it's got some great restaurants. It's a great, nice, nice, pleasant setting.
Deborah, you're not muted.
Deborah, your Zoom is on. Thank you.
And anyway, that's pretty much it. But the Moss Landing Street Fair this Sunday, and urge everybody to go out there. It's a nice break from the touristy Monterey Peninsula.
More options, right? Yeah. Thank you, everybody. I also just wanted, because we all went to NACO, just to say we had a great trip, some great meetings. I serve on the telecommunications and technology committee, and also as one of the vice chairs for the Immigration Policy Task Force. It was also good to see one of our colleagues from California, Sonoma Supervisor James Gore, become the first vice president, and he'll that will make him become president of NACO next year when the conference is, I believe, in Tampa, Florida. So that will be our next year's another hot destination, humid hot. But anyways, overall, good. And I'm glad we all got back safe despite the challenges for some of us. I also want to just announce that my young supervisors are ending their program coming this Thursday. What we do in our finality, we have a mock hearing, and we always try to pick a real local policy issue. So we are and our young supervisors debate both sides of an issue. We try to emphasize critical thinking and making an argument, even if they perhaps disagree with it, learning it, because that's as lawyers do, they always have to anticipate the other side's arguments. And so it's training in that. And we are debating the Paharo Housing Project. And they were able to read the farm farmer's housing study of the Salinas and Paharo Valleys. They read the news articles, they read the the materials from our meeting in December about it. They read even the lawsuits that were filed, giving them multiple sources to read both sides of what was said in that issue. So we want them to have a real policy debate around a real issue that is impacting our community. And issues of housing are never easy either. Last thing I would want to mention is just that I'm having my Latino farmers market, my mobile office hours at the Latino Farmers Market at the Real Deal Grounds here in Salinas, in my district on four between four and 7 p.m. this Friday night. So invite the public to come to that. And just to end, we already announced earlier that we're taking a break for three weeks. We will be back on August 22. Our IT staff and other county staff have been making improvements in our chambers. So we hope this will be our last meeting here. We will be back. No? It's taking longer.
Nice.
Nice try. Wow. They thought, is there an update? Nah. Well, I thought it was. Well, they're making improvements there, technology and lighting and sound. So I guess we're here a little bit longer. But since we're breaking for summer, though, I wanted to take an opportunity to thank all our team, everybody who's here, helping us outrun these meetings, our security staff, our translator, Diego, thank you. Wanted to say thanks from everybody for helping us get through this. We'll take a break for three weeks, but we'll see you when we come back. So with that, we'll go to county council first.
Can I do one more, Mr. Chair, before we go to council? I completely forgot. We're going to do an open house down in District Three on August 10, invite folks out. That'll be the day that our young leaders graduate from their program. And it'll also be the day we reveal the new artwork on the walls for this year from South County Artists. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, my staff will join. I'll be coming from Sacramento. So I'm going to try to join you a little late, though, but we'll be there.
Right. Thank you, Honorable Chair members of the board. Today in closed session, there is one item to be reported by unanimous vote. The board voted to initiate litigation in one matter. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. And we do have an adjourned memory of Guadalupe Valdez Supervisor Lopez.
Thank you.
Speaking of this.
So Guadalupe Valdez lost her life tragically on the Fourth of July. Many of us heard the reports on the news about the incident involving illegal fireworks down in the community of Gonzalez. And so we wanted to send our thoughts and prayers to her family, knowing that that family is very integrated with the county family, with the member working very closely with Mary Zeeb. And so we just wanted to take this opportunity to recognize the loss for our entire community, especially for the Valdez family, and to take this time to let them know that our thoughts and prayers are with them. And there is a GoFundMe that we will be sharing internally, as well as via social media. And so if anybody has interest in supporting the Valdez family, that opportunity will be available. Thank you.
Okay, so on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, we want to extend our deepest condolences to the family of Guadalupe Valdez, all her friends and family in her community in Gonzalez, a really a tragic incident that happened there. May she rest in peace, and we'll adjourn this meeting in her memory. Muchas gracias, and we'll see you on August 22.